Are we, are we recording?
Yep.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the April 26th, 2022 Tenino City Council Work Session. A few items on the work session agenda, presentation from TRPC Executive Director Mark Daly, Mayor Wayne Fournier on Robert Half Assistance and Project, discussion on future council meetings with the possibility of doing one per month in person, one per month virtual, see what the council thinks about that. And then a request for support of Operation Recruit Enlistment Dinner, and then talk about having a council retreat. So we will start with Mr. Daly and give him the floor. So go right into it, sir.
Thank you very much. And like I said, it's really good to see you all in person. My name's Mark Daly. I'm the Executive Director at Thurston Regional Planning Council, and wanted to talk with you, and I just, you have my presentation, right? Okay, great. Wanted to have a chance to talk with you because there is a ton going on right now, especially in relation to transportation between the federal infrastructure bill, Move Ahead Washington recently being passed in this state. There's a lot of funding out there for, for transportation work. And so I wanted to make sure, right now I'm going around to as many of our members that can make time in their agendas for me to just talk about the things that we've got going on that's pertinent to your area, but also talk about one of our highest priorities, I-5, and some of what's been going on around the federal infrastructure package and state Move Ahead Washington. Are we, oh, it's up there. Okay, great. Thank you. Next slide. But very quickly, just because, one, I haven't been in front of you in person for over two years, so it's great to see everybody. So just very quickly who we are as a reminder. So we're a voluntary organization that was created by state law back in 67. So we've been around for about 55 years now, and we bring together 23 members, all the cities, the county, and all the big special purpose districts like the Port of Olympia, Lot, intercity transit. All those jurisdictions come together to plan on things at a regional level, so across jurisdictional boundaries, and primarily on things related to land use and things related to transportation. Next slide. And so in a nutshell, if I had to say kind of the three things that we do that, that we're most known for is there are, there are dollars that come to our region through Thurston Regional Planning Council. Federal transportation dollars that our Transportation Policy Board, which Councilmember O'Callahan sits on, makes recommendations to our council, which currently Councilmember O'Callahan sits on, that makes the decisions on what projects to fund locally with those federal dollars. And we do those call for projects roughly every two to four years, and we've got one coming up this fall, which is something that I wanted to make sure you were aware of. We do a lot of planning. Some of it's required for receiving those federal and state funds. Some of it is things that we do for our members. Like recently, we helped the, the three big cities, Lacey, Olympia, and Tom Water on a housing action plan via contract. So these kind of large cross-jurisdictional planning activities, that's what we're here for. And we do a lot of data. We, we are the ones that do the, the forecasting of our, of our population, our employment. We, you can find all kinds of things on education, jobs, all kinds of information we collect on an annual basis and make available on our website. Huge resource for people for any information about the county as a whole, but also we have individual profiles for each of our members like Tenino. Really good resource. So a couple of things I want to, next slide, please. A couple of things, like I said, that I want to make you aware of. In our last call for projects, the last time we had federal funds to go out, our council decided to set aside a portion of that money strictly for the use by our smaller rural communities. Tenino, Rainier, Buquota, Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis, and Nisqually Indian Tribe. Those were the only entities eligible for these. The Chehalis didn't put in, but the other four did, and decided to split that, the funding evenly. And so that provided 137,500 each one of those jurisdictions. And, and Tenino is using those funds to deal with sidewalk improvements just across the way here. And those are scheduled, I think, to start, if I remember right, in 2024. So, and that was made available by the county taking federal funds and then using them on a county project so that they could make local funds, which are way easier to spend, available for the smaller jurisdictions to do the projects like these sidewalk improvements. In our call for projects this fall, our staff recommendation is going to be to have the Rural Community Support Program again so that we can again provide a chunk of money to our smaller jurisdictions that is enough to get something done. That was the problem with the way we had been doing things is the apportionment to the smaller jurisdictions was so small that you had to save it up for a long time before you could do anything. We're, we're trying to address that. Next slide, please. We've got a rural mobility strategy study that's going on right now. And this is, the intention here is that we're looking at some of those key routes that connect South County to North County. So like old Highway 99, 510, Rainier Road, those, those, those roads that make that connection between north and south, what kinds of things could we do to improve the function on those so that they provide a really good connection between our more rural areas and the urban centers up north? And this is still pretty early on. This project is slated to go into 2023. And right now, we're still working on the current conditions report of that. So you'll be hearing more about this, but this project, I think, is a really good opportunity to look for some improvements, again, to just better connect our communities in the region. Next, please. Rural Transit. Actually, could you go back one, I think? Okay, never mind. Sorry. Thank you. Rural Transit. This is something we've been, this is one of the services we actually provide, and really the only kind of implementation thing we do out of TRPC. Every two years, we compete for funds from the state to operate rural transit. And then we contract with Around the Sound, the actual service provider that runs rural transit. And with the pandemic, some of what that funding goes to is for after-school programs, to get kids to and from after-school programs. So after, over the past two years, we haven't been spending those funds. And so we took those, some of the funds that weren't needed for those after-school programs, kind of reinvested them into rural transit. We updated the rider guide, translated it to Spanish. We updated the routes in Google Transit so that it's easier to navigate. We're working with Rainier on, and this is another one that I just would like to put a pin in with you. We're working with Rainier right now on some bus stop signage for their stop in Rainier. They're making some changes in that area, and they saw that as a good opportunity to make their rural transit stop a little more obvious, a little more permanent. And after we get done with Rainier, we'd like to talk with some of the other jurisdictions that have rural transit stops about maybe doing the same thing. Next slide, please. Our Regional Trails Plan update. This is one that's going to be of interest to Tenino because this is the first major update of our trails plan. But also you might remember that now, it's probably been two years ago, that we completed the trail feasibility study that looked at extending the Yelm-Rainier-Tenino Trail out to west Tenino and south down to Buquota, and looked at the feasibility of both of those routes. Those routes are going to be incorporated in this update of that Thurston Regional Trails Plan. And we're hoping to also have that ready in early 2023. But that's one of the ways that we're going to keep that idea of a west Tenino connection and a connection down to Buquota moving forward. So that'll be an important part to help underscore the importance of that trail. Yeah?
Can you go to the Bureau of State Office to pick up a map of the local area? And those were always for, the reason they were free is because they sold out the type of long rim on the back and all that stuff like that. Do you know how to do that?
No, the Regional Trails Plan, we still put it out and aren't copy. We've-
No, no, I mean, so how do you type response?
Oh, I, I'd have to look into that for you. I don't know the answer to that for, for certain. So let me, let me find out, and I can let you know. Next slide, please. So now I do want to talk a bit about what's going on with I-5. This has been the, the highest priority for Thurston Regional Planning Council for about the past six years, and we've gained a ton of momentum on this. Since when we first started working on this, it was about traffic congestion. But we've learned a lot. And one of the things that we learned is that the Nisqually River at the delta is cutting its channel towards I-5. And some modeling conducted by Nisqually Indian Tribe and United States Geological Survey has found that at the current rates of erosion of that channel, the Nisqually River is going to cut its channel to I-5 in the next 15 to 25 years. And that's if, at the current rates of erosion. If we have big floods like we did in 96, 97, that could happen much, much sooner. So I-5's at risk through the delta in addition to the congestion issues we talked about. Next slide, please. And then this also is a really high priority for the Nisqually Indian Tribe. And what you're looking at in this figure, and this is actually the elevation of the land under the water. And so those things that are closer to blue are higher, I'm sorry, are lower elevation. Those things that are closer to red are higher elevation. And then things that are gray are above sea level. And what this shows you is that, is how I-5 is kind of acting as a dam across the Nisqually River. That gray line is I-5 going across the Nisqually. That, that, that's limiting the mixing area between freshwater and saltwater. That area is critical to salmon when they transition from being a young freshwater animal to an adult saltwater animal. They need that mixing area to, to get their kidney function basically reversed. So incredibly important. The bigger that area, the better salmon do. And that's why it's such a priority for the Nisqually Tribe to, to kind of remove that dam by putting more of I-5 up on pillars. And so that's part of what we're looking at. Next slide. From a congestion standpoint, why we care about this is you're looking at 2045, and that is I-5 through Olympia, and that's Highway 101 going off to the west. And this is on any given afternoon from that peak period of about 5:00 to 6:30. And what we expect to see in 2045, if we don't do anything, is about a five to seven mile backup from 101 in the southbound direction. What looks like a red line on that is that those are actually individual red dots that are vehicles in our transportation model. So those are vehicles in stop-and-go traffic is what that is showing you. Next slide, please. Then we've got a major pinch point just to the north of us at Mounts Road in Pierce County. And this is where, right now, WashDOT is adding a HOV lane through Joint Base Lewis McCord in both directions. So there'll be four lanes going through that area. But in Mounts Road, it'll go back to three lanes. That causes a backup. And we expect to see similarly about a seven-mile backup from Mounts Road up through the base, really eliminating a lot of the gains that were expected from adding a lane through JBLM. Next slide, please. And as you all know, we've got limited alternate routes to I-5. And when we've got issues on I-5, we've got a lot more people on 507. We saw that with the train derailment. We see that all the time. When traffic gets bad, more people choose 507. Next slide. So we're also looking at 507. And we've got three roundabouts near Yelm that have been identified as being very helpful if we were to put them into that traffic flow on 507. On any day, but especially important when we have closures. Another reason that I wanted to bring this up is you, you might remember, two years ago, we worked with Tenino, Rainier, Yelm, Nisqually Indian Tribe, and I'm not sure, actually, I don't recall whether Chehalis was part of that, but on a package, oh, in Thurston County, on a package of South County improvements that we put in for state funding. I think it might be good for us to revisit that list of those projects and see if we can package those up for federal funding. There are going to be a ton of opportunities coming up for transportation funding. And we've, I've been on webinars about that funding where they're talking about distributing money in terms, in amounts we haven't, we don't usually get to talk about. And so they're raising a bunch of the minimums on grants. And so we're going to be needing to get creative about compiling projects together, things that we might normally go after jurisdiction by jurisdiction. We actually might compete better if we roll some of those up and are able to tell a cross-jurisdictional story because they're looking to spend large amounts of federal infrastructure dollars. So that's something to, to consider, and that, that I'll keep, we'll keep talking about at Policy Board and Council. Last slide, please. And then I wanted to make sure you're aware, we received funding, TRPC did, in the last supplemental transportation budget to look at high-capacity transportation for this region. And this came from, we met with Senator Leas, who's the Transportation Chair for the Senate. And with the work that we're talking about doing at I-5 at Nisqually and crossing the Nisqually River, it would be wise for us to know, are we, what are we, are we ever looking to bring rail, commuter rail into this area? Are we ever looking to bring light rail into this area? What, what are our longer-term plans for express bus service? Whatever some of those different options are, we would be wise to get them identified now so that they can be put into the design for whatever's done with I-5 across the Nisqually River Delta. And so the legislature agreed with the importance of that and provided $250,000 to TRPC to do that feasibility study for high-capacity transportation. And we'll be doing that this year. So there's a ton going on. I just wanted to give you that overview. I would love to talk with you more about any of these specifics, but I also just want to make a plea for any ideas that you have that you think are ripe for Tenino from a transportation perspective. Please make sure that we, we were aware. So, because I'm going to be looking for ways, like I said, to cobble projects together to try and get as much of this funding to our areas as we can because we've got a lot of work to do. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Daly? Make sure you speak into the mic when you're, when you're talking. Well, no, if you've got something, share it with the council, too. It's, you know, we're all here to-
Yeah. One of the things that we've been grappling with here in Tenino was down over by the, by the grocery store that we have. There were plans for a roundabout, which I never thought was going to be feasible down there. What I think could help, because if you're, if you're coming into the city, you've got that one turn that you can just take, okay? We put up a traffic light so the people that have to take a right or a left, that have to take that left-hand turn, they wait a little bit. And then the same thing with this side. I think that would be much better traffic control than, than Traffic Circle. Never mind that the gas station just went in that pretty much takes that off the plate.
Okay. And, and it was the Traffic Circle, I'm trying to remember. It's the Traffic Circle that was in the Main Street 507 report, correct? And so you're, yeah, but for the area that, that you're, oh, okay. And so you're saying that that might not be the, the solution anymore, is that what?
No, I don't think it is because they put that at the gas station in there, which took up a lot of land. But if we put a, a singleization in there, I think that would work real well. It doesn't have to be very long per, per turn, except for maybe in the mornings and the evenings, which is the high-traffic times. But you've got one that just, you can just turn right into here. Just be careful. You can turn right into here. No light needed. You've got straight across and then taking that left-hand turn. So people over here would have to stop for a little bit. This will be going, and they can go. These two would have, have the stop sign. Then this would stop. These two, these two would be able to go.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we certainly have needs.
Yeah.
Sidewalks, bridges, roads.
You've talked about the repaving-
The Sussex, the Sussex thing. I mean, that, that was-
Exactly.
Like, almost like project-ready, I thought, but it was a lot of money. So if you're talking a lot of money, maybe it's time to dust that off.
I, that, that's what I'm encouraging people. It's dust off old plans that maybe we thought weren't feasible because they were too expensive. There's an opportunity now that we haven't seen in a, in a long time, if ever. And so it's, it's time to dust off some of those plans and see what we might-
You said that five years ago, though, too. Remember that? You had that conversation?
Five years ago, though, they hadn't passed a-
They just said they were going to-
I didn't even know how many trillion-dollar-
Now, now it's actually-
Now they've passed it. Yep, yep.
I'm getting a lot of feedback.
You are?
Yeah.
I, I think that any-
That's the wrong way.
Oops, sorry.
Anything that can be done to slow down the traffic coming straight from 507 through our town, especially the trucks, the semis, because, yeah, there are some really peak times. But I'm, I'm uptown all day, and it's all day long.
And I think the Sussex project kind of like addressed a lot of those issues. You know, the kind of the narrowing of the streets and the-
Some bulb-outs.
Yeah, yeah, creating some things that would calm traffic. It was just, you know, the next, the next phase, the money never came to talk about design, and we kind of, it just-
Do you think that now maybe there is a possibility?
There's certainly a possibility. I mean, just an anecdotal example, but there is a fund source that we were looking at that used to have a $5 million minimum threshold. Project had to be at least $5 million. This time around, they're raising that minimum to 20. $20 million is a huge project.
Yeah.
So for some of these fund sources, I think we're going to have to cobble some of these pieces together to make them big enough to qualify for some of these fund sources. Kind of a unique issue to have, but, but I think it's what we're looking at. So, yeah, it's time to, time to dust off some old plans. And please, give me a call, and let's see what we can figure out because we'll be looking to- What I told our council, and they agreed, is that we, we have obviously limited staff resources to develop, but everyone agrees that the staff resources that we have to try and kind of identify projects to, to put towards these federal funds, our first priority is trying to support the South County jurisdictions to put together a package. So I'd love to keep talking with you about that.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
That brings us to me on Robert Half. So, you know, we've had a vacancy within the, the rank of Clerk Treasurer, and we, we've had an issue with bank reconciliations and falling behind on bank reconciliations. So, you know, speaking with the city attorney, I took, took the initiative to sign, well, I didn't sign a contract, but made an agreement with a company called, it's a temp agency, a professional temp agency called Robert Half, and asked them to send us a, someone with accounting experience for a two-and-a-half-week period. And they would come down and hammer out bank reconciliations, just work solely on that project. This was an issue with the last two Clerk Treasurers where they're doing all of the, you know, all of the normal duties and unable to just solely focus on this thing that we were getting backlog on. So we are about a week and a half into that project. We're making progress. On Friday, I expect some kind of assist, assessment from Melissa on how far she's gotten. She, you know, she was, at one point, she was back to doing things in 2017, but really, starting at 2020, nailing, nailing down the bank reconciliations. Friday, she should be able to give me an assessment on how much more she needs to put into it. But initially, it was anticipated two-and-a-half-week period with Melissa, and then there would be a two-week period where they were going to send in a, a much higher-level accounting individual with some significant municipal finance experience that would kind of come in. And then after the bank reconciliations were caught up, we would sit down, we would talk about internal controls, audit prep, year-end report prep, and then, and then forecasting, future forecasting. So we're trying to get ourselves at a, kind of a, zeroed out. And then we're trying to get, get ourselves into a position where we can start looking forward because in, you know, as far as balancing the checkbook, we, we did, we did fall behind on that. But we are in the midst of a plan to catch up. And I'm hoping that at the next meeting, we'll know better where we're at and what we need. But that, that is my hope. We can't bring another Clerk Treasurer in without getting those things done. I don't want to burden a new person with a backlog of things that, that kind of fell behind with some of the turnover. Any questions? Okay. Discussion of future council meetings. It was brought up, the possibility of holding one in-person and one virtual. This is our second in-person. I like it. I think it's good. But, you know, I think an argument can also be made that virtual, virtual council meetings are also more available to people that maybe can't get out of their house or something like that. So if anybody has any opinions on maybe coming up with a hybrid or just stick to in-person or something else, I wouldn't want to go back to all virtual meetings. I think that would be a bad move. But if anyone has any opinions on anything whatsoever, please let me know.
I do have an opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
I would not like to see us go back to virtual. I don't think, I don't think any more people listen in to our virtual meetings than attend them in person.
Okay.
And I, I really think that it's just better when we do it in person. I, I don't, I don't want to go back to virtual at all, so.
I agree with, I agree with Linda. Especially with making, with the improvements we did on this building. Let's put it to use.
Yeah.
I agree. I prefer in-person, but like, that is a good idea to keep it available just in case when we do have like the snow days, that way we're not canceling maybe a meeting. We can still have the capability to do it, but I prefer in-person.
That shouldn't be a problem. That's not going to be a problem, is it, to still have the ability in case-
Well, it's usually it's one meeting, and if you miss one meeting, unless there's something pressing, it's, you know, you, you just move on.
Yeah.
But, okay.
You know, we can still have the in-person meetings and do a virtual for the people that can't show up. Just do it that way.
Which we do. We're now doing, these are live right now.
Okay.
So there's people that are watching them on YouTube Live. We, we could conceivably come up with a way that people could phone in from home or something like that with public comment, if we want to open it up to that. I don't know, maybe we can think about that. But, but right now, people are able to watch them from home as we do them. Previously, when we were doing them strictly at home, and in the past, they would, we would record the meeting, and then we'd upload them the next day. But I think we took a leap forward when we now offer them through YouTube Live.
That stuff, that kind of stuff we can still do and still have it on YouTube. And some of the other meetings that I attend, if you're, if you're a guest, you sign in ahead of time that you want to talk during the, the public comment meeting. This way, we know that you're there, and they can still say anything that they need to say. We do that with TPB, TRPC, the Fire Commission meetings, all, all that different stuff that I attend. We, we have a mix. So if somebody wants to, but they can't get to the meeting, but they want to at least listen in or make comments, they can still do that. And I don't see why we can't do that here.
And we are doing that. Okay. Final item. I'm going to skip over the support for Operation Recruit and Enlist Dinner because I think that'll go on the- Um, final item, I'm gonna skip over the support for Operation Recruitment and Listens Dinner because I think that'll go on the, uh, it's time, that'll go on the, uh, announcements, but I do want to talk about council retreat. So I'll bring that up on my report. All right, that's it for the work session. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the April 26, 2022 Tenino City Council Meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, fair, honest, lawful, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You guys bumping chairs over there?
Jason swung his chair in.
Oh, jeez, Jason. That ends up in assault charges around here sometimes. Johnny death. Jeez. Uh, we have an agenda before us needing approval.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings the minutes for the 4/12/22 meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Uh, it's when they're all on at once and they all start hearing each other?
Thank you, Mark.
Motion passes. That brings us to the consent calendar. This is a consent calendar consisting of April 13th, 2022 through April 26th, 2022 payroll E F Ts in the amount of $23,215.05. Claims checks number 30541 through 30573 and E F Ts in the amount of $52,891.71. For a grand total of $76,106.76. No liquor cannabis license renewals.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Motion, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No executive session, no presentations. That brings us to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, this is your first opportunity to do so. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes. Hearing none, moving on. No public hearings, no proclamations, old business. Uh, Tenino Playground Update. So we have a review of, uh, the sales proposal. This is something that was provided you last time, but this is a final sales proposal. Uh, I believe the only things that changed was some color schemes, uh, that aren't reflected on here. We have signed this. Uh, it, you know, I, I, yeah, I believe it was approved last time. And, uh, we are moving forward with it, but this is what the sign, final sales proposal looks like. So that is included in your packet. New business. We have none resolutions. We have none ordinances. This is a quick meeting. Reports. Chamber of Commerce.
I am going to do the Chamber of Commerce for George.
Okay.
We just held a Ten- Tenino Art Spring Market and it was really good. It was really good. Not as good as it was last year, but we did it in March of last year and so it was, there was nothing else going on. This last weekend, we had, uh, Country Chicks had their thing and the St. Martins had a Home and Garden Show. And so we didn't have as many people, but they all did pretty well. And then, uh, of course, everybody knows about the State of the City address to a packed house and the video is on the Chamber and City website pages. Oregon Trail Days Committee meeting is Monday, May 2nd at 5:30. The next Chamber Lunch is May 18th with Peter Urbano, Representative of the 20th District at Sandstone Cafe. The Arch Commission is working on setting up the first meeting in late May. Washington State Arts Commission notified us, we are receiving $13,000 grant to do the light pole metal art banners. Those are going to be done by our local artist and, uh, Stu Waldrop of Creative Ironworks. And that we're going to hold a, uh, art contest for people for, we want things like the, the locomotive and different things, the, the waterfall and, and to depict Tenino on all the light poles. Um, steady, next steady meeting is May 20th and that's it.
Thank you, Linda. Fire District 12.
Oh, okay. Uh, I, I made an announcement at the chamber meeting that, uh, two apparatus that we asked for in our last tax, uh, tax request for the new building and some new apparatus, those apparatus have been ordered. Uh, the aid unit will take about a hundred, say, just say 200 days. And the, uh, water tender will take somewhere in the neighborhood of 450 days before they get here. But it does satisfy the requirements by, by law of how we're supposed to use the funds, even though we haven't started getting it yet. We're, we're safe. We're going, making sure that everything that we do is by the book so that nothing comes back on us later on and we get in trouble for it.
That's okay.
Uh, at our, at our commissioner meeting, uh, Paul Bruce is going to speak. I'm not quite sure what he's going to be speaking on. And this is for the commissioners.
They can't hear you.
Can you, no.
I'm sorry. Uh, Paul, Paul Bruce.
Thanks, Rana.
Yeah, okay, time's up. Uh, Paul Bruce is going to speak at our next fire commissioners meeting. That's for all the commissioners in Thurston County. Not quite sure what he's going to be speaking on, but thank you for allowing him to do that. Um, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, library not present. Museum, they are closed and in the midst of a remodel. Uh, Jessica's, uh, taken the bull by the horns on that. Uh, the lid has been repainted and it looks dramatically different. Now the walls are getting painted. Uh, it's, it's gonna look much nicer. Tenino Community Service Center. Would you step up to the mic, please?
Turn to the microphone. There we go. Um, this weekend on Saturday, we're going to have a shot clinic. It's going to be for the adults and the children. It's at the VFW. Um, there, you might see some of the flyers around. We passed out about 50, 60 flyers today with all of our seniors that are shut in. Um, it's going to be 10 to 1 and, uh, we like to thank the VFW again for housing us. There's also going to be a, um, medicine takeback at the, uh, the police station and that's 10 to 2. So that's what's going on. Um, you're gonna probably see quite a bit going on at the, uh, food bank again and at the warehouse with the electricians coming in. Uh, we've got some things going on, so on to better things.
Thank you, Jody. Civil Service Commission, no report. Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee.
We're gonna meet on, on May 6th. It's our next meeting. Still got five, six grants have been turned in. And the first, first five will have the first shot at the money because most all of the projects that, you know, yeah.
Most all the projects that they are doing are probably going to take the full 2,000 that they would have coming, so.
We offer 10,000 a year to local businesses to do facade improvements. We've been doing that for. Four years?
Three, three.
Three years? It's pretty cool. Like, it's a little micro grant program. It's, I mean, it's pre- put a lot of paint and window dressing on a lot of the businesses downtown.
That one over there is going to be painted red, that one on the corner and the, and the, um, what's the thing behind it that, that?
Feed store?
No, that, that, but that.
The container.
The container is going to be.
Look like a train?
Also, but it's going to be like a locomotive or like a train. Yeah, yeah. That's going to be the Whitewood Cider Company. Or it's, is, but, yeah.
Chief Police has no report. Director of Public Works, what did he provide us? Oh, wait, go back.
I'm going to him, but you're gonna have to speak into the microphone while reading it.
How am I supposed to do that?
I don't know. Do you want to see the laptop?
Would you read it into the record, please?
Seriously?
Yep. No, that's a lectern. This is the dais.
Okay. Troy Cannon's report, Director of Public Works. Good evening, council and mayor. Sorry that I'm not attending the city council meeting tonight. There is not a lot to report from the last council meeting. Waste Water Treatment Plant, Ruben, our new wastewater treatment operator is doing an awesome job. He's got our plant running great. The goal is to get the EQ basin empty and that is going well. The plant is taking on about 20,000 gallons a day from the EQ basin to the wastewater treatment plant. Right now that you, EQ basin is holding 600,000 gallons of liquid at 20,000 gallons a day going back into the plant. It will take 30 days to empty the basin. That is perfect timing to start de-watering the sludge pond. The water from the belt press will be put into the EQ basin, then slowly put into the plant. The collection system, there was a check valve that went bad in the station behind the Sandstone Cafe parking lot. The guys worked on that Monday and finished it up Tuesday. The park, uh, he met with the playground installers last week to move and install the old toys across from Parkside Elementary. They will be here next week to get started moving the play structure, the play dome and the swings. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy slash Jen.
Uh, Troy and I are both really happy with the way things are going on at the wastewater treatment plant since we've made the, the, the staffing changes. Uh, Ruben is doing a great job and the, the amount of water flowing from the EQ basin back into the uh, plant has, we've been able to increase the, the amount of water we're able to treat quite a bit by uh, us just kind of getting a handle on how things are being processed out there. Uh, the, we've got the other two, you know, Ruben's doing great. The other two new staffers are off to a running start. Uh, Derek is going to get his CDL this next week and then we'll have everybody at Public Works out on the streets uh, with their CDL. Uh, Colby in the, in the plant, the oper- operator in training, he's doing a good job. Uh, it's all very new to him, but Ruben is, is mentoring him pretty effectively. So we're, we're, we're happy with the way things are going.
Code Enforcement Building Inspector, we heard from him last meeting. City Attorney, no report. Clerk Treasurer, no report. Mayor, uh, so a- as you heard from council member Godovak, I gave a study of the city address at the council meeting. Uh, I don't know if that, chamber meeting, I don't know if that would be something you guys want to hear in here or if you could watch it on the city website. Uh, but it, it seemed to go very well. There was also an article in the Chronicle today that you could read that, uh, spells it out there as well. Uh, I, I felt it went good. I had a lot of good feedback on it, but if anybody didn't like it, I don't think they'd come up and tell me they didn't like it either, so I'll take the positive feedback for what it's worth, but I think it went well.
I think, I think you ought to do it here and I think we, it ought to be announced that it's going to be here and if people want to listen to it, they can come right here and listen.
Okay. Maybe we do that next meeting. Uh, council retreat. Uh, so we're back to hanging out with each other again. And it's been a while since we've had a council retreat and we've got a wonderful new council member here. Uh, so I reached out to Doug Ma and we are thinking maybe, we look at June 25th, I gotta look at my dates, but we're hoping to have a council retreat sometime in June. Uh, I believe that weekends were best for everybody. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
So we will shoot for a weekend. Uh, it's gonna get tough in June, but we've got some really big stuff that we need to go over. Not, and they're exciting things. Uh, we want to kind of unveil the next big thing with the Ag Park. And there is, there's something that you guys, it'll, it'll be, it'll be really exciting. There'll be a lot for us to talk about and chew on. So, uh, we want to get this.
So we should keep every Saturday, try to keep every Saturday open, is that what you want?
Uh, Doug said not the 18th and I think, I think that's Father's Day weekend anyways. So.
The 18th, I've got a funeral to go to, so.
How do you plan if? I don't know, I don't know. I guess, I guess at your age, you might expect them. I just know there's gonna be one in June.
That's history and law. It's a celebration.
I'm sorry, Linda, I love you.
I was thinking when Mark was giving his report on the timeline for some of these things, I'm thinking, well, I won't see that. That's exactly what I was thinking.
Oh, you're gonna live longer than everybody.
Down the road, you think I'm gonna live to be?
Yeah, I think you got a lot of miles left.
No.
So we're looking at June, we've got a schedule around all Linda's funerals.
Yes, please.
Uh, and then C D B G funding. So, uh, I think I can officially say how we, uh, how the mayor's decided things. So, uh, as you know, it's the, it's our round for C D B G funding. Uh, there's about a million, I think, I want to say a million two that is projected to come in. Uh, about 20% of that goes to, uh, like funding the, to the administrative part of it that goes to the county. And then there were requests that came in. We, uh, gave our request for $550,000 for Phase Two of the quarry pool. And I'm very happy to say that we, we got 450,000 plus. So, uh, that, yeah, it's very good. The deal that, uh, that I, that I requested was that uh, we receive the 450,000 and then if anything extra comes in, so they've only projected what's coming in. There is a very good likelihood that they'll get more money that comes in. So I said, hey, we will take 450,000 and then anything else that comes in, it was a pretty good deal. It was a calculated risk. So kind of gave a little to some of the other, uh, organizations, you know, roof, we, we wanted to give them a little extra money and a, a couple of other things. And it kind of took the calculated risk that, uh, if anything else comes in and it, they're, they're saying that it could be about 75,000 more comes in than expected, maybe 100,000 comes in more than expected, that would go to our project. But with that 450,000, we're still, you know, we're still way over the mark that we need to be to do everything that we need to get accomplished to make the quarry pool. You know, because that's, there's 200,000 for Phase One and then now there's 450,000 for Phase Two. That's a lot to, uh, to do this, uh, this, this pool renovation. I'm, I'm talking, you know, toys, water toys inside there, resurfacing of everything, uh, remodeling the bathroom, concession stands, s- you know, docks, uh, new filtration system, absolutely everything. Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty amazing. So we're, I'm getting with the engineering, uh, uh, team Gibson Olson on that and we're gonna start planning out what that's gonna look like. Mike reached out to a pool architect today that we'll have coming down in the next few weeks. And we'll just, we'll spell out what our, what our vision is and we'll get, we'll get moving on that. Very exciting. And then expect a presentation on that in the future. Be that.
No report.
Solid Waste Advisory Board.
That was, there was, um, updates basically. Litter program, cleaning up the highways. They've, Thurston County has started that. Um, and they have work crews part-time from Cedar Creek. They also have a volunteer program. And if anybody wants to do a particular portion of a road, they just need to contact the county. And they will provide safety vi- safety vests, litter bags, first aid and signs for litter crews. And then they talked about recycle and from the county, if you had, if your city is having a special event such as Oregon Trail Days, um, contact the county and they will provide all the recycle bins that are needed.
Thank you.
And that you do over at the county building. And the person's name, I have it also, that you need to contact for that. So that was about it.
Thank you, Elaine. Uh, TCOM 911. Tenino School Board.
So we're, uh, getting close to the end of the school year. So there's a lot getting crammed in between now and, um, the last day of school. So I'm gonna start with the band. So tomorrow over at the Kodiak Room at 6:30, the Tenino Jazz Band will, um, be performing and there's also going to be a silent, silent auction. Um, tickets can be sold at the door. You can also get them online as well. And also I wanted to mention that prom is going to be June 4th. And so the high school is hosting the dress event, the prom dress event, the week of May 11th. Um, dresses will be available to borrow and Geraldine Maxfield is the one who's actually putting this on. She's still looking for dresses for, um, girls to borrow. And also if you need a dress, contact her and, um, you can go through all the dresses and it's by appointment only. So if you're needing to get one, um, she'll be the one you need to contact. Uh, just a reminder, May 20th is gonna be the Heart of Tenino PTSA Dinner Auction at Hillside Farms. Starting at 6:00 PM, there is still tickets available for that as well. And I forgot to mention that the band, not the jazz band, but the, but the whole band, um, And I forgot to mention that the band, not the jazz band, but the, but the whole band, um, on May first, they're going to, um, Long Beach. They're going to Long Beach. They actually get to be in the parade this year, so they haven't been able to go in the last two years. And on the, on May fourteenth, they're going down to Squim and they're going to be in that parade as well. So the band has got a lot of stuff going on. Um, so the eighth graders are going to get their end of the year barbecue and that's the second of the last day of school. And so, um, that's pretty exciting because they haven't been able to do that either. Uh, June fifteenth, the seventh graders will take a walking tour around Tenino and see the history of Tenino. So they're going to do a little tour of the museum. Um, I don't know if you heard, they want to come by City Hall, check out City Hall and then just kind of do a little tour, which I think is super cute. So that's going to be on the fifteenth. You'll see all the seventh graders walking through town. Um, the ninth, there's an open house from six to seven thirty over at the middle school because Mr. Palmer is retiring. So they're going to give him a little send-off and thank him for, you know, all the years that he worked with the students and.
About May ninth or June ninth?
I'm sorry, June ninth.
June ninth.
Yes. Um, and last I wanted to go over, um, last time I talked, I was telling you guys about, um, ongoing projects, ideas that they had, what they wanted to repair. Um, in terms of the levy that passed back in February, um, unfortunately, they won't be able to utilize those funds until twenty twenty-three. So what they do have from the previous levy that they're able to repair, and they're going to start all this this summer, um, they're going to do updated features for the high school gym. So they're going to install LED lights. Uh, they're going to do like a nice fresh coat of paint, which is going to make it look kind of refreshed in there. Um, they're going to do some bleacher maintenance, which is super important if you've ever sat on those bleachers. It, yeah, so they're doing some repairs on those. Um, they're installing a new lift system for the basketball hoops, so you'll start seeing those changes. But next, next year in twenty twenty-three, we'll start seeing the big stuff happening, roof repairs and.
Cool.
All that exciting stuff.
TRPC, do you have, would you like to give a report or?
I think I can.
Okay. TPB?
Same thing. It's, uh, I send everybody, uh, after meeting, report for both TRPC and TPB.
Okay, ledge is out of session?
No, it is out of session.
Do you have any report? Okay. Public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to provide public comment, now's your opportunity to do so. Nobody's moving. Announcements.
I have. May twenty-first, the Splash Bash Committee has decided, yes, we're going to go ahead with our Splash Bash, even though the pool's not going to be open. And we're going to, whatever money we make, will be used to buy one of the toys. Hopefully, we might even be able to get a grant with, that we can use it with matching funds to have a little bit more money to spend on one of the toys for the kiddie pool, so.
Awesome.
Yep.
Uh, Jen, do you have that op, the Operation Recruitment and Enlistment Dinner letter from Colonel Avril? Okay. Uh, so we, we've been asked if anybody would like to participate or attend the May third Operation Recruitment and Enlistment Dinner. Uh, Colonel Ron Avril sent this to us and has invited anybody who would like to attend, uh, to give them the opportunity. It is a, it's a mass recruitment thing for, uh, armed services. I'm sure Mr. O'Callahan would love to attend something like this. It's kind of right up his alley. Uh, May third is a.
Monday.
Monday, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay. All right, that is there. If anybody's interested in that and they want more information, uh, send an email to Jen and she will send you that announcement. Are there any further announcements? All right, hearing none, meeting adjourned. Thanks, Marcus. Nice to see you.